All right, so national real estate exam prep. Today we're going to go over contracts, practice of real estate and agency. So as we're looking at this thing, this is one of the biggest components. As we're looking inside of the national PSI real estate exam, right? You guys are all here for one reason or another, but at the end of the day, it is to pass this exam and to start this career as a real estate agent. Because we know that limitless ceiling and the only barrier to entry that we have is this exam, right? Like, we're looking at this exam. This exam is not fun. It's tough. And it's kind of hard to conceptualize, but I can tell you this, that once we get through this exam, you're going to be able to forget most of the content and you're going to be able to focus on building your business, building relationships and helping buyers and sellers and families get into homes. So national real estate exam prep, contracts, practice for real estate and agency, and let's kick it off here. So we're going to start with contracts. And as we're looking at contracts, there's a couple of things to keep in mind. An agent must have working knowledge of contracts law. Because every aspect of the business deals with a contract. And here's a contract. And so this is very important. A contract is either oral or written. And it's you're agreeing to actually do something or to not do something like that's definition of a contract. So as we're looking at this thing, we can have an oral contract. We can have a written contract. We know that a written contract is enforceable. And an oral contract is not enforceable. And the contract is really, I am going to do something or I'm not going to do something. That is what a contract is. So many oral contracts are valid and enforceable. However, most contracts involving real estate must be in writing to be enforceable. And how do we know this? The statute of frauds. All right. So the statute of frauds determines the documents that must be in writing to be enforceable. So that's something that I would keep in mind. When you know that the statute of frauds directly points to for a contract to be enforceable, it must be in writing. The second thing that I think that you might see a test question around as you're looking at this is you might get a test question that says, what is one contract that does not need to be in writing to be enforceable? And it's a lease for less than one year, a lease for less than one year does not need to be in writing to be enforceable. So as we're looking at this thing, a couple of things to keep in mind. Contract, it can be written or oral. And it is to either do something or not to do something. And because of the statute of frauds, we know that it must be in writing to be enforceable. And the only contract that does not need to be in writing to be enforceable is a lease for less than one year's time. So as we're looking at this thing, here's, here's your question. The statute of frauds requires that real estate contracts be. Can we know this, right? Like, we just went over to it. The statute of frauds is a legal doctrine that requires certain types of contracts, including those for sale of real estate, to be in writing, to be legally enforceable. The answer is D. So as we're looking at this, you guys are going to see many questions on the exam around the statute of frauds. It's a very important topic and it dictates how to have a legally enforceable contract. Now, as we're talking about contracts, one of the biggest things on the exam is we're going to have to know what makes a contract valid. Because we know what makes a contract valid. We're also going to know what makes a contract void. And we're going to know what makes a contract voidable all at the same time. So what makes a contract valid is firstly, it's legally competent parties. All right. So we're going through, we have legally competent parties. There's mutual agreement. One party says, I'll do this if you do that. We have a lawful object. So we're talking about real estate contracts. We know that it is perfectly legal to buy and sell real estate. We have to have some kind of consideration and consideration is not necessarily earnest money. All right. So I don't want us to think that the consideration is earnest money. The consideration could be that if you take the home off the market, I will purchase the house. Like, that could be the consideration that's inside that contract. And again, it has to be in writing. So as we're looking at this, when you get a question about the validity of a contract, these are the components that you're looking for. Competent parties, mutual agreement, lawful object, consideration and agreement in writing. And so if it's missing any of these things, this is what we have. We have a void contract. All right. If one or more of those items are missing, the contract is now void. All right. So if it's not a lawful object, it's void, right? So if we were to think about this and we were thinking about John Wick, right? I don't know if anyone, and I'm sure there has been people that have seen John Wick, but we're talking about a hitman. And right, they go through and they put these contracts together. Well, guess what? Not only is it illegal, right? That the contract wouldn't be enforceable. Now, I don't know if hitmen are going to take each other to court because they didn't fulfill their contracts. But that's, that's what we're talking about here. It actually has to be legally. It has to be a lawful object. It has to be mutual agreement, legally competent parties, consideration and agreement in writing for it to be valid. And if any of those components are missing, the contract is void. Now, here's the thing, we have voidable. Now, when we're talking about voidable contracts, I think the biggest thing that I want you guys to think about is age. All right. That's probably the biggest one. It's that, it's that third bullet point, fourth bullet point right there. It says one party's legal incapacity to enter into a contract and really being a minor. All right. So that's come back be one of your biggest things and it's voidable. So we also have failure by one or both parties to disclose a material fact, a mistake, misrepresentation or fraud, undue influence or duress, or a breach in contract. And you're looking at this stuff and you're like, well, Charles, why doesn't that make it a void contract? And it's a voidable contract because what happens if the terms are still favorable? And you want to go through with it and you were the faulted party, right? So let's say that the, you have a contract, all right? So the contract's written and you're on the buy side of things, right? So the seller and they give you the seller's property disclosure, right? We all know seller's property disclosure, it lists all the issues with the house. It's in writing. We know that any material defects have to be in writing, sent over to the other party. And that is typically on the seller's property disclosure that this is done. So we have the seller's property disclosure, it lists everything that there's an issue. Well, one of the things that wasn't mentioned on the seller's property disclosure was that the roof leaks. And obviously the seller knows it because when it rains, there's water coming through. All right. So they didn't mention this. The buyer finds out. But the deal is still a good enough deal to the buyer where the buyer wants to go through with the contract. It's in the buyer's right, right? Because there was misrepresentation about the house and the condition of the home. There was misrepresentation and so the buyer could void the contract, but they don't want to. Because the deal is still in their favor and they're still getting great terms and they want to go through with it. That's what makes the difference. So as we're looking at this, if one of the components is missing, it's a void contract. And if one of these other items may happen, it's up to the other party to raise their hand and say, you know what? Based off of what we just discovered, I'm out. And we could look at this as maybe even duress, right? Or undue influence. I think that's one of the big ones as well, right? Like, what if you're going through and someone has put you in this situation where it's like, hey, you have to make a decision right now? Be thinking about your family and they're putting all this stuff into your head, right? And you're stressed out and you're going through and you're deciding on the dotted line because there's so many emotions going through your head. You're frustrated. They're playing on everything. Well, you're, you're in duress at that point. And when we look at this thing, you could void the contract. But again, you look back and you're like, you know what? I'm actually okay with the terms. And while that was a super stressful situation, I want to move forward. So avoidable contract is a contract that can be canceled by either participating party for qualified legal reasons. The party may also choose to amend or correct the contract instead of canceling it. All right. So I think this is very important. There's obviously going to be test questions around this. You have to know what makes it valid. You also have to know what happens and makes it a void contract. And one of the big void contract questions as well. It's going to be the seller, or I'm sorry, the lead based paint disclosure. So if you get a lead based paint disclosure question and it wasn't delivered on a home built before or on January 1st, 1978, then you have a void contract because that is a legal component. There is no pass, go, collect $200 and let's reconcile this thing. That's a legal component that if missing automatically voids the contract. So as we're looking at this thing, we got these questions and says, a contract to do something illegal is. We just talked about it. It's, it's A, it's, it's voidable, right? So eight, or I'm sorry, it's, it's B, it's void. I'm sorry, there's A on there. So a contract must have all legal required elements to be valid. One of those elements is that the thing you are contracting to do is legal. So I'm sorry, I put A on there is voidable, but it's not voidable. It's void. That makes a void contract. So the answer would be B. The second question is Johnny, a 16-year-old wants to start this investment career. And he signs a contract to buy a house and a few weeks later, he decides that he doesn't want to buy the house. He can most likely get out of this contract because it is voidable. The contract is voidable because Johnny wasn't of legal age when he signed the contract, yet he can go ahead with it if he wants to and is enforceable on the seller. So the seller has no recourse to walk away. And I think that's what we have to think about here. The seller does not have any recourse to walk away because it's a legally binding contract. The only reason why it is a voidable contract is because Johnny being a minor makes it voidable. Now, it doesn't mean that Johnny has to walk away. Johnny could. All right. So Johnny wants to go through with the contract. Everything could be enforceable. We can move forward. He can close and everything's all good. But at any point of the contracting period that Johnny says, you know what? I actually feel like I'm being taken advantage of here. I'm a minor. I don't want to go through with this. The contract would be void. So as we're looking at a couple of other things that we need to keep in mind is the different types of contracts that we have. All right. So we have a bilateral contract. And a bilateral contract involves a mutual exchange of promises. And so for instance, we have a sales contract and listing contracts are bilateral contracts. And a listing contract, the seller commits to paying if the agent finds a buyer. So it's a bilateral, right? Like, we're going through and it's a promise for a promise. Both parties have to go through and they have to execute. And both of them have something they need to do. That is a bilateral contract. And then in contrast, we have a unilateral contract and that is a one-sided agreement where one party makes a promise to perform. And your biggest one, this is where I think you're going to get your test question. It's going to be around an option contract. All right. So an option contract is an example of a unilateral contract between a buyer and a seller that gives the buyer the right to purchase the property within a set timeframe at a fixed price. The seller cannot sell the property to anybody else during this timeframe, yet the buyer never has to get the money to close on the property. All right. So as we're looking at this thing, bilateral, both parties have to perform. The unilateral contract only one. And so if you do get a test question around a unilateral contract, the answer is going to be an option. An option is a unilateral contract. And so that unilateral contract really is, it's the seller saying, hey, I'm going to sell you the house. You have X amount of days to bring me X amount of money. All right. The seller at this point can't go advertise the house to anybody else. They can't sell it to anybody else during this timeframe. They must wait for that buyer. Now, it's unilateral because the buyer never has to go find any money. All right. The buyer never has to go look for the money. Then buyer never has to close on this house. Now, if the buyer does find the money and they agree to close on the house, then we have a bilateral contract, right? It's going to go through. We're going to actually put the CBS together, the contract to buy and sell. We're going to put that thing together and then it's going to turn into a bilateral contract where both parties have to perform. But in the beginning stages of this, it's unilateral. The obligation is only on the seller to not sell to anybody except for this buyer that they promised this timeframe for. We have an implied contract, all right? And an applied contract in real estate is an agreement between two parties that is not explicitly written or spoken. All right. So that's implied. And it is understood to exist based on the actions or behaviors of the parties involved. All right. So I don't think you guys are going to see too many questions around an implied contract, implied agency and express agency probably. But implied contract and express contract, we just need to kind of understand it a little bit and more so around the implied and the express pieces. So implied is really through actions or behaviors of the party. The express side of this is it has a similar legal force as the express contract in which the parties agree verbally, voluntarily or in writing. So when we express it, we're actually saying it. We're either putting it in writing. We're communicating it. And we're going through and we're saying, hey, I want to buy 123 Main Street. And they say, awesome, I want to sell 123 Main Street to you, right? That is an expressed contract. So again, implied and express, one is through our actions. And one is because we're actually stating our intentions, whether it is oral or written. So as you're looking at these test questions, it says, you bring a buyer to a house being sold as a FISBO, for sale by owner. The owner is aware that you are an agent and sells the house to the buyer you brought. Even though you never actually talked about it, you expected a commission because you feel like you have A. And as we're looking at this thing, it's you have an implied contract which occurs because of the party's actions, right? You brought, you brought the buyer, all right? You brought the buyer and you just assumed that since you brought the buyer, that through your actions, you're going to get paid. Now, in an express contract, as we're looking at this thing, it would have been clearly stated. And a unilateral contract, only one party has to act, which we just talked about. So and then executed, for looking at executed, that just means completed, right? That is a completed contract. So in this case, an implied contract, this is where you would see that scenario. And again, I don't think you're going to see too many test questions around that. I actually think they're going to be around agency and implied agency and an express agency, which we will talk about. Your second question, John makes an agreement to let Sue buy his house at a certain price within the next nine months if she wants to. What kind of agreement have they reached? And again, we're looking at this thing. And we have an expressed unilateral contract. All right. So John must act if Sue wants to buy the house. And we're going through, in this case, this is an option. All right. And this option is both expressed and unilateral. They've both, they both have spoken that they want to sell, they want to buy. But it's unilateral because only one party has to perform and that is John. John must wait the nine months in this case for Sue to go find the money. And again, this is the test question that I think you're going to see. You're going to see a unilateral question and the answer is going to be option. Or they're going to talk about an option and the answer is unilateral. It's going to be one of those two, but that's where it's going to point to. So we have offer and acceptance. All right. So offer and acceptance, also known as mutual consent or a meeting of the minds is a fundamental concept in contract law. An offer must clearly state the exact terms and conditions and must be accepted without modification. The offer should be precise in nature, accurately described in the property to identify the subject matter and must include an exact price. For an example, you cannot offer to buy a house with a whole lot of money and you must specify an exact amount such as a million dollars. All right, cool. So we have offer and acceptance. And when we're thinking about this, we're going to get down a little bit further. But we have someone that's saying, hey, I want to buy your home. And someone saying that, hey, I'd like to sell it to you, right? And the offer and acceptance is in the contracting agreement. All right. That's going to be the biggest thing to think about here. This isn't someone putting the home on the MLS. This is a contract. This is the contract to buy and sell. Someone puts out the offer, someone signs the offer. Now we have offer and acceptance and it's through that signature. The offerer is the party making the offer, while the offeree is the party receiving the offer. In real estate transactions, the offer is typically made by the buyer and received by the seller. The offeree or their authorized agent must accept the offer without any changes for it to be valid. All right, cool. So we're looking at this and I probably confused some people. So when we're talking about the offerer or the offeree, I told you before that the MLS is not the offer. It's the actual contract. All right. So it's not the multiple listing service. It's not you going onto Zillow and seeing the home for sale or whatever that may look like. The buyer in most cases is the offerer. And so that is the OR. So that's the biggest thing that when you're looking at this thing, always, always, always in these exam questions that you're going to get, anytime you see OR at the end of a word, that is the person giving. If you see EE, it's the person receiving. All right. So we have offerer and offeree. And if we want to go down a bunch of different rabbit holes, we have mortgage or mortgagee, right? We have the trust store, the trustee, right? Like, so O R E E just for, so you guys can kind of visually see that a little bit. So the offerer, that is the buyer. They are offering a contract to buy a house. The person receiving it, the seller, that's your offeree. They're receiving it. So before acceptance, an offer or a counter offer can be revoked. All right. So when we're thinking about this, if we don't have signature, which is acceptance, all right? So the offerer, the buyer writes an offer. And the seller hasn't signed. It doesn't matter. You give them a day, two days, whatever you put in the contract. Let's say one day has gone by. It's a two-day contract. And so we're on day one, they don't sign it and the buyer gets cold feet. Well, they can revoke that contract. They can pull it back. They can say, you know what? Actually, I changed my mind. Even though the contract gave them two days to accept, the buyer could change their mind. Here's the other thing. If you have a counter, all right, you have a counter. And the counter goes through and the offerer is the buyer. The offeree, the seller, the seller gets the offer. They're like, you know what? I don't like these terms. I want to change the terms. Now the seller is the offerer. They've changed places now because now they're writing a new offer. Well, the buyer gets the offer and they look at this and they're like, no, don't like those terms. I'm going to walk away from this deal. The seller does not have the right to say, you know what? Actually, let's go back to that first contract that you sent me. That's not how this thing works. That offer is now off the table. That offer is now gone. All right. So when you go through and you do a counter, that counter now voids the original contract. And so you can't go back and sign and say, well, I know, look, it's okay. I signed your original offer. That's not how this works. So an offer will be terminated by the death or the insanity of the offerer or offeree, destruction of the property or a material change in the circumstance. A counter offer occurs when the seller changes any terms proposed by the offerer. And this action reverses the legal position of the parties, right? And so making the original offerer, the offeree and the original offeree, the offerer. And a counter offer effectively creates a new contract. So that's a big thing. So if you get a test question around this, what we know is that we don't as the seller, and so we'll look at this. I don't know if I have this set up here. So let's look at the questions and I'll go through it. When a seller wishes to counter an offer made by a purchaser, which of the following documents should be signed by the seller? And it's just the counter offer. By signing the purchase and sales contract, the seller is agreeing to those terms and is bound by the terms of the contracts. This is the original contract. The counter offer changes the terms. So by signing that, the terms of the counter are changed, but the rest of the contract remains the same. Changing and initiating the original offer is a poor practice. And it is always cleaner to submit a counter proposal. And that's how we do things in Colorado. But as we're looking at this, that's going to be probably your test question. All right. So I actually think that is the test question that you're going to see is something along those lines. And it is when doing a counter, which offer, which, what contract do you sign? You don't sign the original. You sign the original, you're locked into the original conditions. You, the seller, the person that's doing the countering, you're only going to sign the document that you want to play by those playground rules essentially. All right. So, and again, offer, offeree, they can keep changing positions back and forth depending on who's doing the counter. Your second question is James makes an offer on Katie's house. Katie counters James's offer at a higher price. James rejects Katie's counter offer, then agrees to accept. And then Katie then agrees to accept James's offer. So what do we have here? So as we're looking at this thing, just like we talked about, a counter offer is a formal rejection of the original offer. Thus relieving the purchaser of all their obligations to perform. So with this scenario, that, that offer is now gone. The offer is now off the table, even if Katie were to sign it. Right? So she signs James's original offer to purchase the house. It's not enforceable. The offer has already been rejected as soon as she wrote a counter and sent the counter over. It is a rejection of the first offer. So James would have no obligation to Katie. When we're talking about some different things, right? This is, I think, where we get a little tied up is addendums and amendments. A separate document that is attached to a signed contract to add or clarify terms and conditions is an addendum. Addendums are often used to include supplementary details such as schedules, attachments or clarifications. They typically don't alter the original terms, but instead work alongside them. And here's your example, an appraisal addendum. And a real estate contract might allow a buyer to withdraw from the sale if the property appraisal doesn't meet the minimum sales price. Addendums are legally binding if all parties involved agree and sign the document. So you send the contract to buy and sell, the contract to buy and sell is out there. And there's an addendum which attaches to the contract to buy and sell that says, also, if there's an issue with this, we reserve the right to walk away if we can't resolve it. That's what an addendum is. Now, we have an amendment and you're going to need to know the difference between these two. A change to the original contract that alters some of its original clauses or sections. So amendments can rewrite or abolish contract terms such as changing a contingency timeline. So writing out new terms can help ensure that everyone is clear on what they've agreed to. So an amendment, all right? I need you guys to understand contingency. On your exam, that's what they're going to use. They're going to call them contingencies. And the contingencies, as we're looking at this thing, we're talking about appraisal contingency, inspection contingency, previous home sale contingency, right? These are the different contingencies that you're going to see. And what it is, is Mr. 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 and Mrs. Seller, I, the buyer, intend to buy your home contingent upon this happening. All right. So that's what a contingency is. Now, we might change the date and deadline. Maybe the inspector can't get out to the house tomorrow and that's the date that we put in there. And so we write an amendment. And the amendment says that the, the inspector will get out in two days from now. All right. That's where we're going to see an amendment come into place is where we have the original contract actually laying out some groundwork. And then something has happened because we know time is of the essence. And times of the essence means that we're dates and deadlines are going to be strictly enforced. But that does not mean that life doesn't happen and life doesn't get messy. And so sometimes we need to change some things. An amendment would change the original dates and deadlines. Now, both parties have to agree on this. All right. The, the buyer can't just say, hey, I need this date changed. The seller would actually have to agree on it. We'd have to have mutual agreement. Both parties would have to sign. So looking at this, this is, and which of the following instances would you use an amendment? And an amendment is used to change the conditions in an accepted contract to purchase. If you want to change the terms or conditions of an offer prior to acceptance, you need to rewrite the contract or use a counter proposal, right? That's where we do this. So an amendment is for a contract that's already in place. And I already put the answer to the second question on there, but Colorado approved amend extend contract form should be signed. And the agreement to amend extend the contract is only to amend the terms and conditions of a sales contract while it is in process. You cannot amend a contract once it is completed. So it's D, before the sales contract has been fully executed, because executed means completed. Executory, right? Means it's still in the process. It's still working. And executed means it's done. So we're not going to do it before the listing expires. We're not going to do it after the sales contract has expires. We're not going to do it before the contract has been accepted. But we're going to do it before the contract has been completed. All right. So this is a performance thing. So executed means finished. Executory means we're in the process of working on it. All right. So this is before. So this is before the contract has been completed. Alright, so here's some things. We're talking about fair housing now. So if we're looking at this, we're talking about the practice of real estate. We shift gears. And we have these three terms, and I need you to understand these. You're gonna have a couple of test questions around this. Alright, so the first one is called block busting. Now, on your exam, they could also call it panic selling or panic peddling. Alright, so you're gonna need to know all three of those mean the exact same thing. And this is an illegal practice in real estate where brokers attempt to change the racial composition of a neighborhood, and that's truly what it is. They do this by encouraging homeowners to sell their properties by spreading fear about incoming racial minorities. Especially it involves tactics like saying, you better sell your house fast. Those people are moving into town. You do not wanna live by them, do you? Like, that's really what it is. So while we're just like, kinda maybe like gasped internally a little bit as we looked at this thing. That's what it is. It's going in and it's saying, hey, Mister and Mrs. Homeowner, I'm a real estate agent. You need to sell your house today, because I don't know if you just noticed, but this type of ethnic group just moved in next door? And you know what happens when those people move in? Home prices start going down. You need to start selling today. Like, that's exactly what block busting is. And so they're gonna put block busting, panic selling, panic peddling on your exam. You're gonna need to know that that is where you're trying to scare someone in because there is a different ethnic group moving into the neighborhood and that their property values are gonna go down. That's what it's gonna be around. Steering is another illegal practice where the real estate agents guide prospective buyers towards or away from certain neighborhoods based on their race or ethnicity. This practice limits home seekers' choices, alright? And it perpetuates racial segregation. So when we're looking at this, everyone, steering, you might have good intentions around this, right? Like, you might just be like, hey, you know, I, I don't know if you would wanna be in a neighborhood where we have this and we're, we're, we're trying to be helpful. And while that might make you scratch your head, I promise you, you're gonna be in a situation where, where it might may make sense. And so steering, you might think that you're being helpful and you're just like, well, hey, you know, this group actually has a lot of, of eighteen year olds. That's probably a little too young. But maybe like, we have a lot of millennials living in this neighborhood. You'd probably be a lot happier living over there. Well, that's also steering, alright? So we can't actually point someone in here, or someone's like, you know what? I'm looking actually for a, uh, you know, a good Christian neighborhood, right? And you're like, okay, well, these are the neighborhoods that you should be looking in because this is the type of people that, like, any of that would be considered stealing or steering. So again, while a lot of it is around ethnicity and race, they could throw it in on a different way around for steering. And then we have redlining. And so redlining is the practice of denying or charging more for services such as banking, insurance, healthcare, or even groceries. And of denying job opportunities in residence in specific, often racially determined areas. Alright, so when this term came out, like, it was literally, not figuratively, they were literally drawing circles on maps. Red circles and saying, hey, we're not lending to this area into this neighborhood because those people live in that neighborhood and they don't take care of their homes. Like, that's exactly what redlining is. And so when we're looking at this, I need you guys to understand it. I actually think that most of the test questions around this subject, while they might be one off, like blockbuster or block busting, steering, redlining questions. I actually think a lot of them are gonna actually give you the definition, and then they're gonna have you pick which one it is. I actually think that's how they're gonna line this thing up. So your questions. John works for a bank that refuses to lend to anyone that lives in a certain neighborhood near the center of town. What type of unethical practice is the bank engaging in? Alright, we just talked about it. It's gonna be redlining. This is unethical practice where banks or other financial institutes refuse to lend to people who live in certain neighborhoods, often based on racial or economic factors. And for anyone thinks that this isn't still happening today, it is. Like, this still happens today. Banks are still getting in trouble and they're making national news for doing this kind of stuff. Your second question is Bob is a real estate agent that thinks his clients will be happier in neighborhoods where everyone is a member of the same race. Consequently, if his client is African American, he only shows listings of homes from neighborhoods consisting of primarily African American residents. Which of the following describes Rick's actions? Right? And so we just talked about this. This is steering, which is an illegal practice where real estate guides prospective home buyers towards or away from certain neighborhoods based on race or ethnicity. And guys, it's also illegal if you listen to your client and they say that's what they want, right? Like, your client can tell you, hey, I only wanna look at these neighborhoods perfectly legal, right? They're like, hey, I wanna look at, uh, ABC neighborhood and one, two, three neighborhood, and they can actually list the neighborhoods and you can go show them. Now, if they say, hey, real estate agent, I only want you to show me houses with, in neighborhoods that have people that look like me, that is illegal. And we cannot follow those instructions. Now, if they list out the neighborhoods, cool, like, I'll show you those neighborhoods all day long. If you are telling me that these are the only neighborhoods that you want me to show you houses in, and you actually give me the names, we can go look at those houses. But if you say like, this is the only type of community that I wanna live in, I cannot help you there. So we got Sherman antitrust, alright? So the Sherman antitrust act forbids any type of price fixing in India, any industry, alright? And so when we're looking at this thing, we have price fixing. And this is the practice of setting prices for products or services rather than letting competition in open market establish those prices. Alright, so this is where we're going through and we're saying like, hey, guys, um, we, we own the market, right? Us five brokers, we, uh, we sell the most houses in the area, and guess what? No one else is selling any houses. We are. So, uh, I'm tired of getting paid X percentage. Why don't we mark it up to Y? Because if we're doing all the deals, we're gonna get that money. That's price fixing. Alright, so that's when we're going through and we're all, we're jacking up prices because we own the market. Group boycotting occurs when a group of competitors collectively agree to not do business with a third party in order to eliminate the competition, right? So we're like, hey, you know what? That new brokerage moved into town. And, uh, I don't like it. They can't come into our territory. How about this, guys? These guys are gonna come in and, uh, they're gonna try to buy houses and they're gonna try to write offers on our homes. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna reject all of their offers. We're gonna tell our, our sellers that these are bad offers and these guys, uh, they don't actually close on anything. So it wastes a lot of time, so we're not gonna accept any offers from them. That would be group boycotting. Market allocation of customers or markets occurs when there is an agreement between brokers to divide their markets or allocate cons, uh, customers to avoid competing for each other's business. And guys, this could be anything. This could be like, hey, you take the north side, east side, west side, south side, and like, we're gonna quarter this thing up and we're gonna do it. Or it could even be like, hey, you're gonna work, like, your brokerage is very good with the Asian community. So that's where you guys are gonna work with, and your community is very good with the Latino community. So that's who you're gonna work with. That's illegal. Market allocation like that where we're dividing it up and we're saying either by, uh, street address or geographical location or even by like, hey, this is, this is the, the makeup of the, of your brokerage. So that's the kind of people you should work with. Illegal. And then we have a tying arrangement. And this is an agreement to sell one product, but only on the condition that the buyer also purchases another product or service. And this is called a tying arrangement because you have tied the purchase of one thing with the purchase of another. And so this could be like this. This could say, hey, um, I'm going to let you sell or let you purchase this house if you allow me to be your listing agent down the road, right? A fix and flipper calls you, and they're like, yeah, you know, I'm interested in, in purchasing this, this property. I'm gonna do a fix and flip. And you're like, well, hey, I'll make sure you get this deal as long as you make sure that when you go to list it, I get to be your agent. That would be a tying arrangement, which all of these are illegal. These are antitrust. These are all illegal practices. So you walk into a room where agents from multiple agencies are discussing commission rates. What should you do? And the answer is this, walk out immediately. Any agreement with other brokers to charge a standard commission is violation of antitrust laws, even if that agreement is only implied. Actually, I think this is your test question. I do. I think it looks very, very similar to this. They're gonna line it up. You walk into a room. They're, uh, they're talking about commissions. You walk out. You don't say anything. You just walk away. Your second question, antitrust laws prohibits competing brokers from doing all of the following except. Guys, this is the thing. Agency is not established by who pays your commission. Therefore, compensation from the buyer and seller are allowable as long as it's in the contract, right? As long as both parties know what's happening. Uh, and the contract says that the buyer's gonna be paying you something, and the seller's gonna be paying you something perfectly legal. And, you know, in Colorado, actually, there, the new contracts, contract to buy and sell is coming out, and, um, that's how it's lined up. There's actually a line item that says buyer could be paying X percentage and seller could be paying X percentage, uh, to the same broker. So, um, your agency is not established by who pays you, and I think that's very important for the exam as well. The buyer's commission could be paid by the seller. You do not work for the seller if you're the buyer's agent, right? And so just because they are paying you compensation does not mean that you work for them now. Alright, fair housing. So the Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-eight is also called Title Eight. Alright, it's Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act. And it protects people from housing discrimination based on certain factors. And here are your factors. It's race, it's color, it's national origin, it's religion, it's sex, it's familial status and disability. Alright, these are the things that go into discrimination. You can't go through and say, as a seller, you know what? I only want people that look like me to live in this house. So do not sell, do not accept an offer from anyone that does not look like me. That's against the law. If we comply with that, not only could they catch a lawsuit, but we could catch a lawsuit as real estate agents as well, right? We're talking about vicarious liability at this point. Vicarious liability. Someone goes through and says, hey, break the law. And we're like, okay, cool. Let's do it. We both get sued, alright? And if we do something and our actions are not told by the, uh, by our client, then they're safe, right? So if we go out and do something stupid and it wasn't at the direction of our client, our client's safe. But if our client goes out and tells us to do something stupid and we go out and do it, we're both catching a lawsuit. So your questions, right? Which of the following would not be a protected, uh, would not be protected under the handicap status of fair housing laws? Alright, and so the answer here is illegal drug users, alright? So alcoholics are, are covered. People with mental illness are, and people in a wheelchair. They are all covered. Now, addiction is covered, alright? So if we're looking at this thing, we're talking this, that, this would be, um, if we're looking back, right? This would fall under some kind of disability, right? Doing illegal drugs, being addicted to drugs would be a, uh, disability. But this is the thing. The FHA doesn't bar discrimination against tenants who are actually current drug abusers and tenants who have been convicted against illegal manufacture or distribution of drugs. Alright, so if someone's going through and they're cooking meth in your house, they're not protected. They don't get to say, oh, I have an addiction problem. No, 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 no. You, you, you're a drug dealer cooking meth in a house, and so you're not protected. Your second question, looking at this, is if a seller asks their agent to only present offers that are from a good family to grow up in this home, the agent should what? And it's, you're gonna present all offers, right? You're gonna present all offers to the seller. Broker should be aware that the real estate broker license law requires that a broker present all offers received to their seller client. Now, there's a caveat to this, right? As I'm thinking and I'm going through, there's gonna be certain times where your seller says, you know what? Don't show me, um, any offer until like seven days, right? That could be a thing. That's probably a little bit too long. But your seller could say, hey, hold back all offers until this, and you could comply with that. Like, you're gonna comply with that request. But they go through and they say, hey, you know what? If, um, if they don't have children, I don't want them living in this house. And right, that seems like a super innocent request. They're just like, you know what? My kids have such great memories in here. I just know this is a great neighborhood for children, and I really would love a family to move into this house. And that would just mean the world to me. Well, that's against the law. That's, that's a fair housing issue, and we have a violation at that point. We cannot comply with it. We must present all offers. So, agency. Alright, so we're looking at agency. And through agency, we have a principal, and a principal is any person involved in a contract such as a seller, buyer, tenant, or landlord who has hired an agent. Alright, so we have principal. We also have a client, alright? And a client is a party who has signed an agreement with an agent, and the agreement creates a fiduciary relationship. Yes, client and principal mean the exact same thing. So they're interchangeable. On your exam, it could go back and say, it could say the principal, it could say the client. Now, a customer is a little bit different. A customer uses the services of a real estate licensee but has not signed an agreement with an agent. Even though there is not a fiduciary relationship, the customer, with the customer, the licensee must act honestly and fairly with the customer. So on your exam, I think this is where it gets a little bit tricky. There's two ways that a customer is gonna come into your world. One, I think of this. I think of that you're the listing agent, you're doing an open house, and, uh, a buyer walks in off the street. You represent the seller. And this customer doesn't want representation. They just want the house, and you would treat them as a customer. No fiduciary responsibility. And you have some things that you have to give them. We'll talk about that here in a minute. The other way that you would have a customer enter into, uh, your ecosystem would be this. You represent a party. I don't care if it's the seller or the buyer. Alright, you represent one of those parties, seller or buyer. And you're under contract on one, two, three Main Street. So you, uh, you have a client, you're under contract on a home. The other party, so if you represent the seller, the buyer is your customer, even though they have an agent. Even though they have representation from an agent, they are still your customer. And vice versa, you have the seller. The seller and the buyer is represented, right? That is your customer. Representation by another agent makes it your customer when you have representation with the other party, alright? So the other party on the transaction is your customer. So if you get a test question, which I think they're gonna do that to you, uh, they're gonna want you to trip up over it, but that is a customer relationship that you have with them. So, your question, fiduciary responsibilities are always owed to who? So it's the client. It's D. Fiduciary responsibilities are reserved to your client. Your client can be a seller. Your client could be the buyer. A customer is always the third party to a transaction. You have zero, zero fiduciary responsibilities to them. That is only to your client, and your client can either be a buyer or a seller. So guys, I do think this is how they're gonna line up a test question like this. They're gonna want you to be like, oh, the seller's my client. Well, the buyer could also be your client, and so it's the client. Right? This is where the what's the more right? And so we can't be putting information in here. We can't say that the seller's my client, so that's why I have a fiduciary responsibility to. We can't say the buyer's my client. We just know that my client I owe a fiduciary responsibility to, because they haven't given us enough information to know who I represent. The second question is an agency established with a written document is. Well, if it is an agreement in writing, it is expressed, alright? So we have an expressed agreement. It's in writing, an agency established with a written document. This is expressed. It's not an agency coupled with interest. It's not a client relationship. I mean, it is, but the more right answer is it's expressed because we actually put it in writing. So a couple of different listing agreements, right? So we're looking at this thing, and we have an open listing. And this is a non-exclusive contract. This type of listing gives the seller or buyer the right to engage any numbers of age, of brokers as agents. So I want you to picture this. You're driving down the street, and you see all of these for sale signs, right? There's four of these for sale signs. And they're all different brokerages. That would be an open listing. And what the seller said is, hey, hey, broker, come list my house. And, and if the person calls your sign and you find me a buyer, I will give you a commission. That's what this is. That's an open listing. Now, the other three agents, they don't make any money, alright? Also, here's the thing. If that person stops and doesn't call any of those signs, and they just walk past all the signs and knock on the door, no one gets a commission. The seller reserves the right to not pay anybody. We have exclusive right to sell. And this, the exclusive right to sell, this is an exclusive right to market the property for a specified period of time. If the property sells while the broker has the listing, the seller must pay the agreed upon commission regardless of who actually procured the buyer. And that's important, guys. This is very important. There's, there's going to be test questions around this. And so when you see the exclusive right, the exclusive right means that you do not need to be the procuring cause to get paid. All right? The exclusive right, you do not need to be the procuring cause to get paid. We have the exclusive agency listing agreement. This gives the broker the right to market and sell the property for a specified period of time. So same thing. At the same time, the owner retains the right to find their own buyer and sell the property without owing the broker commission. So the agent can list the property, the agent can put it on the MLS, they can have all the marketing rights. But if the neighbor knocks on the door and says, hey, I saw your house was for sale and I want to buy it, the agents cut out. The agent makes no money at this point. All right. So for the exclusive agency listing agreement, you must be the procuring cause to get paid. Now we have a net listing. So in a net listing, an owner sets a minimum amount that they want to receive from the sale of the property and lets the broker have a commission. Any amount above the set minimum. While in this type of situation, the seller is getting what they want for the sale, it creates a conflict of interest for the broker. All right. So again, what this would look like is, uh, you're talking to someone and they say, hey, you know what? Uh, we got some bills to pay and, uh, we need to sell this house. And we need to make two hundred thousand dollars. All right. So we need to make two hundred thousand dollars on, on the sale for us to break even. And so you're like, okay, cool. So we need to list your house for two fifty because you have fifty thousand, you know, dollars that you owe to the banks. We're going to list it for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And you, you know, as the agent, that this house really could sell for five hundred thousand dollars. You see how that's a conflict of interest, right? Like someone came to you and they have bills to pay. And so they told you what they needed to make on it. And so you did the math and you said, awesome. So we'll list your house for this. And they're like, thank you. We, that means so much to us. We appreciate it. And then you just got a commission for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Firstly, that happens, you're, you're, you're losing your license, uh, your license, the license will be gone. Um, and so, so it's, it's against the rules. And so this creates a conflict of interest for you because it, you could act unethically. I think that's going to be kind of lined up your test question. While it's legal in some states, because this is national, while it's legal in some states, it does propose an issue because the agent could act unethically will be your test question. So let's look at this. Which contract has the most protections for the agent? I think this is the real question that you're going to get like. I don't think it's word for word, but this is the test question. And the answer is the exclusive right. The agent is assured a commission regardless of who sells the property, whether it is an agent, another agent, or even the seller themselves. You, the agent, most protections, the most protections for the agent is the exclusive right. And then I just showed it to you, but Jean agrees, uh, to let their agent keep an amount over two hundred thousand dollars that she needs if they sell the home. This is called, again, this is a net listing. So we need to net a certain amount of money. You, the agent, get to keep the extra. The test question is going to say, which one of these types of listings is legal? Yet could entice the agent to act unethically? That's probably going to be your test question. So we're looking at this thing. I need you guys to know cold AC. All right. Cold AC, that is your acronym. So an agent is obligated to safeguard his principal's confidence and secrets. So we have confidentiality. A real estate broker therefore must keep confidential any information that might weaken their principal's bargaining position if it was revealed. So we have confidentiality. The second one, we have the agent is obligated to obey. So we have obey and effectively all lawful instructions of their principal. However, this duty plainly does not include an obligation to obey any unlawful instruction. So this is any lawful instructions. They tell you go break the law, you're not following that, right? We just talked about, if they say, hey, you know what? Don't, don't show many offers from those people or don't let some people without kids by my house. That's illegal. We're not going to obey that. The next one, right? We have L. So the duty of loyalty. Loyalty obligates a real estate broker to act at all times solely in the best interest of their principles to the exclusion of all of their interests, including the broker's own self-interest. All right. So loyalty. We have to put the client's interest above our own. The agent is obligated to disclose to their principal all relevant and material information that the agent knows that pertains to the scope of their agency. So you have to disclose, if you know something, right? Let's say you represent the seller. And you hear from the grapevine that the buyer actually just lost their job. It's a small town, obviously. And you just found out that the buyer lost their job. Well, that's going to impact the closing. So you have an obligation to disclose to your principal, the seller, that you know that the buyer lost their job and that might be an issue for them. We have an agent is obligated to account. So we have accounting for the, for A. All money or property belonging to the principal that is entrusted to them. So we're talking earnest money. We're talking all those different things. That is accountability of accounting. And then our second C, an agent must exercise a reasonable degree of care. So a care in a transaction to the principal's business. So here's what's important. This is fiduciary. Okay. This is an agent to a client or to a principal. This is what you owe to your client, which could be the seller, the buyer, the tenant, the landlord. All right? You don't owe this to a customer. And you don't owe this as a transaction broker. All right? Now this is what's important. As we're looking at this, we have a customer. This is what you owe a customer. Honest and fair dealings. You can't lie to them. You have to disclose material facts and you have to give them reasonable care. And while this is different from the, the care to a reasonable degree, reasonable care is just this. It means that you're not going to do anything to jeopardize your client. So you're going to help as long as it doesn't change your, your client's position of being at a advantage. If you disadvantage your client by the care that you're giving, then you're not going to do it for a customer. All right? So your questions, which of the following would be a fiduciary duty to the agent of the buyer? So if you're looking at that and playing from home, and if you tripped over A, the answer is actually D. So the agent works for the buyer as an agent. And I actually think this is going to how they're going to line up your test questions. Is they're going to throw the answer and they're just the last word there. You see that it's changed to seller. And so as you're flying through this test and you're trying to bang it out, like they're just changing singular words in these sentences that change the entire answer. So the answer is D, your client is the buyer. So you old, oh, cold AC, your fiduciary responsibilities to the buyer. Your second one, right? As we're looking at this thing, the real estate broker acts from a position of trust for the seller or buyer. This is described as, and it's A, it's a fiduciary relationship. This relationship is described as fiduciary. None of the other answers selections describe the relationship of loyalty and trust. Guys, got to know the different types of agents. We have a special agent, a general agent, universal agent, dual agent, and transaction broker. All right. So these are in different types of capacities, but special agent, this is just single task. Hey, I need you to help me buy or sell one, two, three Main Street. That's your job. So just think of a regular real estate agent. You see special agent. I want you to think of a regular real estate agent. Help me buy a house, help me sell a house. Then we have general agent. A general agent is authorized to handle all matters related to a principal's continuous business activities for which they were designated. I want you to think of property manager. General agent, I want you to go property manager. This is someone that's collecting rents, right? They're, they're finding a tenant. They're the one that's orchestrating the repairs to the house. Like they're doing a lot of different things inside of their scope. General agent, I want you to immediately go property manager. Then we have universal agent. This possesses the authority to act on behalf of the principal in virtually all matters, including signing their legal documents. All right. I want you to think of POA, power of attorney here. This is someone that can act as their client. They're a universal agent. They're, 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 uh, their client says, hey, if a home comes up in this price point that you think I could rent it out and make five hundred dollars a month, I want you to sign the deal for me. Don't even call me, just sign it and I'll pay it. That would be a universal agent. We have dual agency. We're talking about the national exams. So dual agency is legal. So dual agency occurs when a single real estate broker represents both the buyer and the seller. All right? National exam, dual agency is legal. You represent both parties. Then a transaction broker, transaction broker, you don't represent either party. All right. And I think that's very important. You don't represent either party as a transaction broker. There is no fiduciary relationship that you owe as a transaction broker. You are a paper pusher. You are working for the transaction. Someone says to you, hey, agent, what do you think is my next course of action? You do not offer an opinion because you don't work for either of those people. And so given your opinion, that would be a fiduciary responsibility. So if they say, hey, will you write up this document for me? The answer is yes. I'll write up that document. How do you want me to write it up? Now, the moment they say, well, what do you suggest? I don't suggest anything. I am a transaction broker. So a transaction broker doesn't represent anybody. They're helping both sides of the party with paperwork, but they don't represent them. And I think that's very important to know for the test. You don't represent either party. You're not a fiduciary for either party. You are pushing paper. You work for the transaction. Dual agency, you work for both parties. Which is very hard.